So I'd like to call the order of the planning board meeting for Wednesday, June 2 at seven oh two. Do I have a motion?
Some motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, let's do a roll call. Jim?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Wally?
Aye.
Brad, Dave, myself, aye. Okay, this is gonna read from Governor Baker. This open meeting of Groveland Planning Board is conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order on March 12, 2022 to the current state of emergency of Commonwealth outbreak of COVID-19 virus in order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus. We have been advised and directed in the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings such as the governor has ordered. Required an open meeting law to have all meetings publicly accessible physical locations. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed to encourage participate remotely. For this meeting, Groveland Planning Board is convening by video conference by Zoom as posted on the town's website identifying to the public may have joined. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and some attendees are participating by video conference. Okay, so first up, we're gonna do the Ipswich River Watershed Association with Sadie Woodward announcing announcements for training with the Mass Audubon Society. So we'd like to introduce Sadie Woodward if she's here. So thank you, Sadie, for joining us this evening.
Thank you for having me. Hi, everyone. I'm Sadie. I'm a college student working with Patrick Lynch. Some of you may know him at the Ipswich River Watershed Association. And I'm just here to talk about a new bylaw training opportunity with Mass Audubon. So this year, Mass Audubon is working together with us, Erwa, to bring their bylaw review training program to the North Shore. The training program is free for all GreedScape's municipal members and it's part of the ongoing efforts to help planning boards, conservation commissions, and other town boards and staff review and revise bylaws and regulations to promote low-impact development or LID. We're currently finalizing the date and time for this for an introductory webinar, which will take place in late June. Mass Audubon will also be finalizing its new curriculum for launch in September. One thing that's really helpful for us to know in advance and part of why I'm here today is to ask you which, if any, local bylaws or regulations the planning board would prioritize trying to review. Mass Audubon's bylaw review tool is really comprehensive and covers just about everything. The Ipswich River Watershed Association has received a grant from Essex County Community Foundation's Land and Environment Initiative. Provide additional one-on-one training for any towns who agree to participate in the bylaw training program. This additional one-on-one help can help prioritize which bylaws or regulations you'd want to have reviewed and revised first. So since I'm a relatively new staff member at Erwa, I can do my best to answer any questions any of you have. But otherwise, I can also write down any questions and get back to you. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I'll also put my contact info and my coworker Patrick's contact info in the chat as well.
Thank you, Sadie.
Thank you.
Any members of the board have any questions?
Just when the training is.
Um, so there's gonna be a webinar with some more information in late June, but we're not sure exactly when it is yet. And then the actual training itself will be in September, since we're still working on the curriculum. But I will be reaching out to planning board chairs and Concom chairs when, as soon as we know all the dates for everything.
That in-person training?
Um, at the moment, I think it's gonna be online, but that'll probably also be in the webinar. Information about whether it's online or in person.
Have we already prioritized the list of bylaws or is that something you need and by when?
Um, I think that would be the job of the planning board to decide which ones to prioritize for their specific town. And then we will help out with like how to revise and things like that and how to use Mass Audubon's review tool.
Yeah, I'm new to the planning board, but that hasn't been done yet. Is that right to everybody else?
It has been done. So we have had to address some of the bylaw requirements per the MS4 requirements from the state. So we recently went and we redid our stormwater bylaw just last town meeting at in June of last year. And there is still room for improvement within the stormwater bylaw. Also, we are looking to address our subdivision rules and regulations and make updates to those. They haven't been updated in quite some time. So we are looking to do a comprehensive overhaul of that. And lid techniques would definitely be something that we would include as part of that effort. And then we've also been looking at the Conservation Subdivision Design Bylaw. And there's also, well, we did just pass the special permit for the common driveways. So there is potential to add some additional drainage specifications to those bylaws as well. So we do have a running list and we are tackling it one by one. And I can share that with every group and they can identify maybe which ones they could help us with or which ones we could recommend that we start with.
This is a good idea.
Three helps good.
So I guess when we get closer, Sadie, you're gonna reach, you can reach out to Rebecca and she can reach out to the board and we can take you up on your offer.
Sounds good. All right. Thank you guys for having me. I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, for meeting minutes, approval of May 18, 2021, meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes, May 18, 2021?
Some motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll do a roll call. Jim?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Brad? Yes. Okay, at this time, I also wanna reiterate the rules of conduct because for everybody that's for this open meeting. Nobody should address the board without permission of the chairperson. All persons shall be requested by the chairperson to be silent. If a person, after a warning of the chairperson's persistent disorderly behavior, the chairperson may order them to withdraw from the hearing, or we also may close the hearing. If it's my opinion that these rules are being violated or the hearing is becoming disorderly, I will read the notice into record and and we will close the hearing. So we would like to open the hearing today and hear from the applicant concerning the update of the plan. We also like to hear from TEC. We can, sorry, open the meeting for public comment. And everyone will have about three minutes. I don't wanna, you know, keep going running on what what everybody's been talking about in the past. I know TEC's got some comments. There's 38 comments. There's been a an address to some of those comments. So where TEC's already commented and we have action going on for these 38. I don't wanna get hung up on this because for the next meeting, hopefully it'll be all taken care of and addressed. And I think that's about it. So we'd like to continue the definitive subdivision for King Meadow Farm, Katie Lane, King Meadow Development, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81T, Ton of Groveland Subdivision Rules and Regulations in Article 14 of the Groveland General Bylaws to hear the applicant requested approval of the nine lot subdivision associated with stormwater management land disturbance permit located on Residence 2, R2 zoning district proposed subdivision located on King Street, Groveland, Mass. 01834, assessors map 26 parcel 13 and map 26 parcel 13. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing of the King Meadow Farm, Katie Lane, definitive subdivision?
Some motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call? Jim?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Okay. Doug and Thad, would you like to start your presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening. Attorney Douglas DeShane, representing King Meadow Development. With me this evening, Kevin Coniff, manager of King Meadow Development, William Holt, our professional land surveyor, and Thad Berry, our professional engineer. In talking with Rebecca earlier today, it was my understanding that the board is looking for us to do a quick overview of the planned changes that were provided in response to TEC's first letter. And then we're gonna let TEC take over. So with that, I would ask Thad to give the board a quick overview of the major changes that we made to the plans in response to not only TEC's first letter, but our original meeting with the board.
Just one second, if I may, Doug. We're also gonna be looking for a signed continuance until September 30 before we get started as well, if you guys are, you know, because we know we're not gonna, we're not gonna get this all done today.
Mr. Chairman, you mean with respect to continuance for your timeframe to make a decision? You're not suggesting we continue the meeting from tonight till September, right?
That is correct. That is correct. If we go over the time allotment, we just wanna give it enough time so we don't have to keep continuing.
I understand. Is there a, is there a form I can fill out or would you like me to present a written continuance to you in the morning or?
Rebecca, do we have a form on that?
I have a form and I can send that over to you right now.
Perfect. All right. I didn't wanna come up with this later. I figured before we get started. So with that, Rebecca will hand that over to you, Doug, or if you're gonna sign. And I'll leave it open to Thad now right now.
Okay.
Presentation.
Thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
So the big changes or the changes that we made were we did eliminate lot or parcel 13G. We basically took that land and combined it with lots six and seven. We went out and did additional soil testing for the stormwater infiltrations for the roof runoff. The Department of Public Work had some concerns about some of the best management practice ponds concerning access and maintenance. We redesigned those to be low-impact development rain gardens. That will be part of the homeowner's responsibility and be maintained by them. And they basically still function doing the same thing for water quality treatment, stormwater infiltration, and pre and post peak flow attenuation. And really, other than some paper, you know, some paperwork and correcting some of the stuff that we had done, those were, those are probably the biggest changes that we made to the plans.
Okay. There's not anything else you'd like to add to that, Thad?
No.
All right, at this time, I think we'll call TEC. Dave, are you ready? Are you here?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. My name is David Nader from TEC. I'm the town's peer reviewer for the proposed development. We have reviewed the revised plan set and drainage report and issued today a second letter summarizing our findings. So first of all, we know the applicant has addressed some of the comments of the first letter. However, the majority of the comments are still either partially addressed, not addressed, or need more clarification. Furthermore, some of the revisions have warranted additional comments to be added from the first letter, which is why it went up to 38 on this second letter. But instead of going through each of the 38 one by one, I'll summarize with examples of which ones they, you know, addressed, partially addressed, not addressed, and use additional clarity. So for the comments that they addressed, we'll start that off with that. Comment 2, the applicant provided indication the intent is to make the development a public roadway. I think they declared that on their plan set. Comment 6, the map and lot numbers were corrected to reflect what is on file at the Groveland Assessor's Office. Comment 18, lot corners have been revised to use stone bounds. Comment 21, the applicant has updated the storm event rainfall amounts to reflect the amount specified in the bylaws. And then comment 26 and 27, the applicant has received review and approval from the Groveland Fire Department. Moving on to the comments that were partially addressed. Comment 3, the applicant provided some of the test fit data, but not data for all of the infiltration locations. Comment 8, the applicant has provided a legend. However, several symbols, line types, and abbreviations used are still absent from it. Comment 23, additional soil absorption systems, including offset were provided. However, not all distance provided, nor was test fit information. As noted from a May 27 email from the Groveland Health Agency, the septic system plan is yet to be submitted for the review. Let's move on to comments not addressed. Comment 20, the applicant still needs to provide proof that the wetlands abutting the site will not see increased peak flows nor will surface water rise due to proposed basin outlet overflows. Comment 24, soil absorption system distances on lot five and six are shown on the plans to be 50 feet from the bottom contour of the infiltration areas. However, the wetted area during even a two-year storm decreases that distance. That's less than 50 feet. Offset distances should be from outside the infiltration area to the soil absorption system. Comment 35, no conceptual plan depicting if the development were to meet the roadway length by law was provided as requested by the planning board at the previous hearing. And then the buyer screening for lot one is also not shown as requested by the planning board at the previous hearing. And then moving on to need additional clarity. It is still unclear if the project is a net cut, fill, or balance project. The applicant should provide a definitive clarity on the proposed earthwork. The applicant needs to correctly list the selection or the section of bylaw they are requesting a waiver from. I believe they have just indirectly referenced. The applicant has specified in their response that town water connections are proposed and no private wells will be installed. However, the first sheet still lists private wells as an alternate. They need to just clarify if private wells are off the table. The applicant needs to be consistent with the amount of impervious area on the site. The plan has different numbers listed for total impervious area on separate sheets. Additionally, the applicant needs to indicate further development if the lots must comply with Section 56 2 H3 regarding the less than 15% impervious area over the entire development. And then comment 31, the applicant needs to confirm proposed curbing just throughout the roadway and not just at the entrance and cul-de-sac as called out on plans. Like I said, those, those last few were, just need additional clarity on. And then additional comments. Attached on to comment 17, the applicant indicated the proposed reinforced concrete pipe is to be class three. However, there are several locations within the right of way where the proposed pipe cover is less than the Mass Highway recommendations for a class three RCP. Comment 29, there is retaining wall proposed on lot six, which appears to approach and intersect the proposed soil absorption system for that lot. And then just proposed retaining wall materials do not comply with Section 70-511 of the bylaws. I think that is essentially just an overview summary. We can get into the each individual comments if anyone has any questions.
Thad, would you like to comment on this? This is your plan? I don't know if that's still with us. My, you know, my big one is where is the concept plan for the 750-foot roadway we asked for last meeting? Oh, Doug, you with us? Thad?
Yes, 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 Mr. Chairman. And I apologize. I do recall the board asking for that. I assume that when you say a plan, you don't expect a fully engineered plan. You want a sketch plan?
Concept.
Concept plan?
It's in the, it's in the reg for what a conceptual is.
I'm sorry, what was that?
It's in the, it's in the reg book what a conceptual is. I think Bill's done quite a few of them actually. So it's a pretty simplified plan.
I can, I can assume that what's gonna happen is if we show a 700-foot, 750-foot roadway, we're gonna lose one lot. So we will show you that plan, but that is not the plan we submitted for a review.
That's correct, but did we not ask you to have that by tonight?
Yeah, we've requested it several times and I think that during the preliminary, if I may, Mr. Chair, that the, the planning board noted that this plan submission was in violation from the get-go, exceeding the 750. And Rebecca, I do have a question for you, if it's okay with Brad. On, on 3035 and 100-foot diameter circles, I'm noticing on this particular plan that quite a few of them are outside the setbacks or contained within the setbacks. And I, and I do recall when I wrote that bylaw years ago that the 100-foot diameter circle and its purpose is that anything can go in those circles. It would not require a waiver of any type within the building setbacks. But there was also a proposed change a while back. Do you know if that was part of that? Did that change at all or are all these circles still supposed to maintain as I wrote that bylaw decades ago?
Wally, are we talking the 80%?
No, the 80% is different. The 100-foot diameter circle was supposed to be, you know, outside or within the setbacks, meaning that the, you still had sidelines. Because if somebody put a shed anywhere in that circle, I'm looking at the old plan here, maybe lot six and seven, you'll see. They'd have to get a waiver to be, to build within the setbacks if there was a structure there. So that's why we wrote that law to prevent that from happening. So any one of these potential future homeowners could pop anything within that 100-foot diameter circle, which would be at the CBA. And it wouldn't have to get a waiver or from the ZBA or anything to be contained in the setback. That was the plan. But I do remember conversation about that. So I think Rebecca might be our best source on that. If not, all these circles gotta be, you know, outside those setbacks.
Yes, so originally the bylaw did contain language that said that the circle needed to be outside of the setbacks. However, that language was changed. I wanna say when they did the rewrite of the bylaw just a few years ago when Sam had started and they had changed the language so that the circle just needs to be anywhere within the lot. And so they no longer need it says be within the setback. So that was the original language, but it did change.
Okay, so the CBA then is calculated other than the circle within that. Is that correct? That's, that's what would have followed suit.
So the CB, the contiguous buildable area is calculated differently. It doesn't necessarily contain the, the circle itself. It's more of the slope, wetlands, and as we had talked about earlier, like a drainage easement wouldn't be considered contiguous buildable area because you cannot disturb and/or touch the area similar to a wetland. So it's based upon the calculations of the, of the, the land itself, not necessarily the circle.
Yeah, so, so the, the intent was, and I'll talk to Sam about this later. I just wanted clarification for the record, so that explains this on the plan. But the, the intent of the 100-foot diameter circle was during, during the early 90s, we had a lot of problems where lots, you know, 50% of them were underwater, et cetera. So this was one of the tools besides the 80% rule that came in. And it clarified that the circle had to be within the CBA. And the CBA is not necessarily included in the setbacks because you, you'd have to go get a waiver. And so that was the intent. But if that got changed later on, that's, I'll just get a better clarification on it. But for the, for the board's experience here and history of why that was there, it was so, this circle was well within the contiguous buildable area. And it was no waivers required for anything. So Joe homeowner five or Sally homeowner, five years from now could go pop in a swimming pool, a shed, an additional structure, not requiring additional approvals for setbacks. So, so thank you, Rebecca, for that clarification on that.
Thad, are you, are you with us? Doug, you have any comments for, for what Dave went through on TEC?
No, I, I would, I would like to bring up one point though, Mr. Chairman. You'll recall when we last met some time ago and we had, and you guys had initially brought TEC on board. One of the things that the, that the, that the board allowed for was that we could talk directly with TEC, you know, a direct conversation between our engineer and, and TEC so that they could, you know, I think it's a more effective manner to work through some of these issues rather than, you know, letters back and forth weeks, if not months apart. So however, I think TEC, and I don't wanna speak for them, but I think they, they were concerned about that and preferred not to to contact or discuss it directly with us. And I'd just like to discuss that because we still have a lot of work to do here addressing all of the Mr. Nader's comments. And again, I can't say enough that how much more effective and timely this could be if perhaps it was at least one opportunity for them to have a conversation. So I just wondering, again, the board had previously told us that that was acceptable. I'm just not sure whether that was conveyed to Mr. Nader or not and would ask the board to consider that.
Mr. Chair, if I may, the situation was not exactly that. It's that the engineer had contacted TEC and asked them to sit down without having had a revised plan, revised concepts, or any type of revision to the plan at all. And so TEC and I had a conversation and said, yes, we agree that it would be productive to have a sit-down, but it would be productive to have a sit-down with a revised plan with all of the initial comments addressed and at that time go through those. And so we thought that would be a more productive use of time than just, you know, sitting down and saying, hey, what do you think about this? And hey, what do you think about that? Because that really goes against the process.
I agree with that, Rebecca. And we, you know, we don't have a revised plan to what we asked for at the last meeting.
Isn't the whole concept, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, isn't the whole concept to have transparency? So that we do know what's going on between TEC, their comments, and what the actions they took? So therefore now the general public and the good people of Groveland can understand what's going on every day?
They're pretty much kept up Rebecca, the job of keeping, keeping up with it and transparency through what TEC writes, Congress, body emails, or when they come up with the, you know, what needs to be done, what needs to be revised, you know, how they bring it up to the board like they just did. So I'm not, I don't have a problem with that, but I'd like to iron out what we got going on here, Doug, before we, you know, before we proceed. There's a, there's a lot of steps that have been missed.
Well, Mr. Chairman, other than filing a, a, a plan showing a 750-foot roadway.
Which is a big one.
But first of all, Mr. Chairman, I, again, I apologize that it wasn't filed and I guess it got lost in the shuffle with all of the more, what we felt were more important issues we had to address with TEC. You know, my client is certainly, I, I take exception to the comment that our application is, was incomplete or wrong in any way. We have the right to do, to file a plan with a requested waiver. And that's what we did. So I'm not sure where the requirement is that we file a plan that completely meets all rules and regulations. We've asked for a waiver. I think we've asked for a couple of waivers. And I think that's been typical of a lot of subdivisions filed in this town. We're certainly not the first.
We also wanted to adhere to the bylaw so we could see the conceptual plan and see what the layout is of the 750-foot road. We also have comments from TEC that I would still like your engineer to address right now, stormwater management. Item number 20, which is a big one, which we talked about before and your engineer tried to school me on it. I'm not a professor in stormwater management, yet I think I was right on some of the stuff that I touched on. Also, moving forward, you know, you're asking for waivers, but we'd like to get a better sense of what the plan should look like. Uh, we'd like to get a better sense of what the plan should look like.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I've just, I, 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 I will get to that plan in, as soon as possible. I, if all it is, is a sketch plan or a preliminary plan, it shouldn't be that difficult to provide.
Jim, for a second.
Yeah.
We also talked about. I believe it was your idea that we come, take a walk through this subdivision, stake out the ponds. So we could have a walkthrough. That has not yet taken place either.
Well, but, but understand, Mr. Chairman, we eliminated. The ponds or most of the ponds and we converted them over to rain gardens. And, and, yeah, I mean, the, the, the end, uh, the drainage design was dramatically. Changed, so there aren't ponds, as I understand it, there aren't ponds to inspect any further. It would rather we would identify where these rain gardens have been placed. And, you know, we're, we're happy to bring the board out there anytime.
I'd like to see him.
Well, Mr. Chairman, why don't we, uh, why don't we schedule a site walk right now?
Okay, what do you propose?
It's a board's pleasure. I, I assume we'd at least need a couple of days just to make sure everything's staked out so that when you come out, you can actually see where everything's located. But, um, I, I, I don't see any reason and I guess I'll ask, um, Dad or Bill or Kevin. Is, is there any particular dates that are, are a problem? Otherwise, I think we do it at the board's convenience. You guys prefer to do, schedule them, uh, early evening or weekend mornings or what, what is the board's pleasure?
I could come out anytime. I don't know about the other members of the board and I don't know about Jim.
If I could, uh, I could say something here?
Sure, go ahead.
So we were waiting to, um, get the field mode or cut. So we could stake everything out so you can actually see it. The problem right now is the grass is so tall, if we stake it out, you're not gonna see anything. So I have somebody going out there hopefully this week to, uh, to hay it and then, um, we'll have it staked up.
Perfect. I'd like, I'd die to see it.
So Kevin, could we potentially schedule a, a site walk for late next week?
We could do late next week or next, a week from, you know, a week from the Saturday or something would work, I would think.
I don't know if the weekends are gonna work. I can, I'm around anytime during the week.
All right, during the week is fine with me. I'm around as well.
Yeah, I'm around the week, during the week.
Wally?
Yeah, it depends on which day, so just schedule it and, uh. I don't know.
Rebecca, is that all right with you?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
All right, so I would say, you know, let's reach out to Rebecca and give her a date and we'll all make sure that we're, we can be there.
And so it'd be late next week? Is that what I'm hearing?
The only thing I can't do is Thursday mornings.
Okay.
Yep.
So we could do a week from today, which would be the ninth and we could do in the, um, morning.
You wanna do morning or afternoon?
I know Jim has, works in the afternoon.
Okay.
So June ninth, what time, Mr. Chairman?
June ninth, hold on one second. I could do nine. Is that too early for everybody?
No, nine would be great for me.
Kevin, is that okay with you? I, it's fine with me.
Yeah, that's fine with me. I'm around.
And we'll, we'll have it cut and, um, the major. Center line of the road and the, uh, rain garden locations staked out. Mr. Chairman, I think it'll also give, if I could just. Remind everyone, I think it would also give everybody a good opportunity to look at the existing vegetation located at the back. Of, uh, the lots adjacent to the, um. Uh, the driveway that is next door. I know there were some questions. I believe that's lot one. I know there were some questions of whether additional. Um, screening is necessary along that roadway. Um, and I, I just wanna remind the board while we're out there that we'll take a look at and add and discuss it. I think it, uh, it'll be far more effective if we discuss it on site so you can see what's there today.
I agree.
Mr. Chair, if I may too, I would like it if we would be able to have the highway superintendent, Rennie Carroll, present for the site walk as well. Considering that the applicant would like to make this a public road, I would like to make sure that he is able to get a better understanding of the design as well.
Perfect, yes, Rennie there now? See ya.
Yeah, I would be available any day during the week, absolutely.
Do you have any comment, Rennie?
Um. I know that they did do, uh, um, some redesign and some refit on the drainage infrastructure that they're proposing. Um, some of it I think is an improvement, some of it. Um, the grade changes, um, will certainly worry me from a maintenance standpoint. But, um, I think seeing the site and getting hands on with what's going on, um, will, will be, would definitely be a, a step up. From, from where I am, just looking at plans.
I agree.
Mr. Chair, can I ask like two questions?
Go ahead, Wally.
Yeah, so the rain gardens that were substituted out for the ponds. Did I hear someone say that the whole, future homeowners are gonna maintain these?
It's, yeah, it looks like two lots are gonna be maintaining these on their own.
Well, it, it was my understanding, Mr. Chairman, that those changes were made in response to comments. That there were concerns about the, the town being responsible for maintaining, uh, the detention ponds. So, um, changing over to the rain gardens, I understand, addressed some of the drainage questions. But it also certainly addressed the, um, the concerns about future maintenance of the ponds.
It also raises the question of future maintenance on a homeowner. So those rain guns might, you know, they're there to, to restrict the flow. If the plantings die, what happens?
And then does, and how does that go with a homeowner that just purchased whatever the fair market value is these homes? And realizes that he has a huge restriction on the lot that he has to maintain? And what happens if they're very not well versed in that, what if they're a first time homeowner? Um, and, you know, what, what does that maintenance cost? So, so back to Rennie for a second, is, uh, is that something you would have to inspect? Or you would, uh, require access to or some kind of, uh, written? Uh, bond to be put in place for those to, for maintenance? Cause they, they are coming out the street drainage and the, and the roof gutters.
Y- yes, uh, that, that is part of my concern when you have, um, as we, you know, many people may know in Groveland. We have a lot of, um, drainage infrastructure that ends up landing on people's properties. And, and me and Rebecca have dealt with this in the past. People tend to like to fill these in and gain more, um, you know, square footage to their properties. Um, which hasn't happened, I, I can't say it, it hasn't happened very frequently that I've noticed in, in, in Groveland. So, um, that's definitely a, uh, concern of mine. And, and something that I think, you know, possibly could be addressed in deeds. I don't know how, I'm, I'm not a developer, I'm not gonna get into that. But, um, you know, putting restrictions like, like Walter talked about, um, would be, you know, one avenue you could certainly look at. But, um, with these types of drainage infrastructure, where you have homeowners. That, you know, have very little if no training on how to maintain and upkeep on these rain gardens. Which I don't, you know, they can become very problems, you know, problematic over time. So. Um, that's also another concern of mine, cause I know there, I think, I believe there's two. Um, that are on the new plan, one of which will become part of, um, one of, I think it's lot eight, I'm guessing, but it's one of the lots.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could answer your question, um, I. A- as more and more subdivisions are moving to private ways or public ways with private drainage. Um, this question is asked a, a lot and the way it's generally handled and it has prevented any problems is that. The maintenance of those is not necessarily, uh, placed on the, as a responsibility of a single lot owner. But rather, um, there is an easement placed on those. And it is the homeowners association that is responsible for ensuring their maintenance. Um, sometimes we even require that the homeowners association has a signed contract. Uh, with a landscape contractor to come in annually and, uh, maintain, uh, those rain gardens. Um, it's paid far out of the homeowners association. Uh, it's not usually a very big expense. Uh, and what it does is that it puts the onus on not one owner, but the entire subdivision. To be sure that is done and it gives the association the authority to make sure it gets done. So that no individual homeowner is necessarily responsible or burdened with that. But moreover, that requirement, the homeowners association, any obligations of a homeowners association. Um, and in fact, the, the purchases obligation to be part of that association. Are within the title of, of the property, they're within the purchase and sales agreements and they're within the deeds. So no one is an unsuspecting owner that buys here. When they come, they will see that there is a homeowners association that is responsible for certain aspects of the, of the subdivision. Uh, typically we see, um, you know, drainage, uh, structure maintenance. Um, other times, you know, depending if it's a private way, it could include plowing and maintenance of the road. Um, but mostly what we see is maintenance of the rain gardens, which is not a lot. Um, these things are planted. Uh, you're right, as long as the plants are, are thriving or growing, um, there's very little to do. If a plant does not make it, it's pretty simple to change it out in the spring when that, when the company comes in. But the board can certainly condition an approval on a homeowners association being responsible for. Um, that and of course, you could ask us to provide you draft or as a, as a condition. You could require us to provide a draft of the homeowners. Uh, association and, and all of the deed notifications, uh, for your review and approval.
I, we have a couple of, uh, HOAs here that just don't seem to work. Graham Way is one, Fairways is another. I mean, you can keep it pri- you can keep it private if you want, but.
Well, Mr. Chairman, you, you're suggesting that, you know, um, we, we've made the drainage. We've, we've taken the responsibility for some of the drainage structures and taken it away from the town. And put it on the homeowners association and you're suggesting that that's not a, a, it doesn't work. But at the same time, you'd like to see us make this a private road that the homeowners association would be responsible for? I mean, I think that's a, a much more dramatic responsibility.
Mr. Chair, can I address some of those comments?
Go ahead, Wally.
Okay. Um. What, what is the fair market value that you guys are just gonna target on the homes? I just need a big ballpark number on that. Six hundred, eight hundred?
Sure.
Okay, all right, so, so, uh, and that's fine, you know, I hope you get whatever you're looking for there. Okay, so we do have a couple of these. One, one of these things and, and I know from working in. Uh, places, particularly condos that have homeowners associations. Um, trying to get, uh, you know, although this is a small number of people, trying to get them to agree on things for spending and putting money in is always difficult. And White Stone Village has one of these. Um, because they're, uh, over fifty-five and, uh, a condo complex over there. And, and they have the homeowners association that work for plowing, et cetera, et cetera. But you're asking people that aren't. That, that are leaving condominiums in different cities and moving to a nice, uh, rural area. Not expecting, and shouldn't be really. Um, to enter into a homeowners association to pay fees to maintain something. Uh, on such as street drains. And, and I think, uh, you, you might have a little bit of difficulty with that. And, and Brad was correct that, you know, we have some of these and they don't work. And one of the biggest problems that we would have in the future is you can write the deed and you can put it in. And Stonebridge is one of the classics where there were restrictions in there. And somehow the word got dropped and it, it appeared on the first half of the subdivision, everybody was issued a chainsaw and a swimming pool. And, and they decimate the conservation area. That was just one example. It was in the deed, it was there, it was big highlighted. Nobody cared, but the enforcement of a condo association, who's gonna enforce it? And you can't leave it up to one person. There's gotta be some oversight. Now, in White Stone Village, just to give you a hint, there was a planning board member that was on that board. Um, for a long time till it got cemented in. I'm gonna say about five years. We actually had one planning board member that sat in on the big things. Where they would come into the planning board meeting. I don't know if that was, was worth it, but you're talking, you're switching from a condo complex. To a single family dwelling where people are escaping those things and then entering them in. One of my questions, uh, with the road length is that, i- is that these lots are tight? And, and, uh, and I challenge you on the seven fifty road length, only on one thing. It, it's okay to ask for a waiver for anything. You, you know, the board, it's up to the board to decide is it a better man for the town, et cetera. I don't have problem with that. Typically, and e- and even I think Bill's done this in the past before, is, is you commit with a plan that meets the reg. And then you have a second sheet that says, hey, we wanna get a waiver on this. Uh, depending on what it is. Road length is a big one, but I think also because this road length is a couple hundred feet out. Um, may have put more, uh, cause it's impervious, uh, may put a bigger burden on to the drainage. So, so that's something that, that, uh, will present itself when it's been in the plan. But we did request that in the preliminary and, and I'm sorry if you thought that got missed, but that was, that was pretty clear with that. So the drainage, that the rain ponds, the rain gardens. Y- yeah, you may have fixed one problem and may have created another and it, it might be worth revisiting.
Well, yes, I, I. I, I have to say that I, I've been involved in dozens of these projects where the homeowners associations have worked out great. Um, people, people, I, I will assure you that there will be no one who's interested in buying one of these homes. That is gonna walk because there's a five hundred dollar a year homeowners association fee. Which will ensure that someone comes in and takes care of their rain gardens and, and drainage. In fact, people, um, I, people would much prefer that than having any kind of individual responsibility on their lots. And I would also suggest that a homeowners association is the best self-governing. Um, process. Um, if, if somebody doesn't pay their five hundred dollars a year, the homeowners association has the right to lean on their, their properties. Nobody wants that for five hundred dollars, I can assure you. And people's self beliefs, if they're paying their money and they're doing their thing, they wanna make sure everyone else does it. So that won't fall onto the town. It will fall onto the homeowners association and this is not a condominium. This is just a homeowners association where each of the homeowners, this is a small subdivision. Each of the homeo- homeowners will have a seat on the association. And so it's not like a governing board, it's all, all nine homes will have, uh, a say. And, um, again, we, I've seen conditions.
Can I, can I address, can I address, this is that, can I address the rain gardens?
Sure.
Sure. First of all, the rain gardens aren't taking, aren't taking roadway drainage. Secondly, um, they're, they're, they're very simple to maintain. Um, and it is, I, I said in my response letter, um, the first thing that Mass D E P requests of a, of an engineer. Is to consider. Um, using rain gardens, a low, low impact development for the specific reasons that they work. They work and they're easy to maintain. That's why they ask you to do it. Unfortunately, most engineers don't wanna do that. They like the, like the typical big, um, drainage areas. Um, that they can just, you know, design is kinda simple, but they don't, but they don't work as well. Secondly, as part of this, as I said before, the other thing that Mass, um, D E P asks. The designer to consider is dispersed. That is, more B M Ps dispersed throughout the site. So that you're breaking up the drainage patterns, making smaller B M Ps closer to the, the point of discharge. Those are the first things that they ask you to do, even before you get into the, the standards that they ask you to meet. So these rain gardens, um, are placed. So these rain gardens um are placed specifically on on the lots. They're taking grass runoff, roof runoff from the overflows, that's it. Um, one of them takes a small portion of a driveway. The plantings that are specified are universal plants. You can buy them at any nursery. They thrive. I've never had a problem with black eyed susans, you know, thriving. But if a plant dies, it gets replaced. The, I submitted with the package, a homeowner's guide. That's typical from the federal government and Mass DEP for the homeowner to use as a guide to maintain these. On top of that, all of that gets recorded in the individual deeds for each one of these three lots that has this rain gardens. I also submitted in the plans typical images of what a rain garden is. It's simply a landscape feature because these rain gardens are not taking heavy TSS. Two of them are taking no TSS. One is taking a small portion of a driveway. So they're basically just handling straight runoff. From the ground surface. Now, by doing what we've done, by breaking up the drains the way we did, what have we accomplished? We break out concentrated flow. That allows the water to be more dispersed on lawns and so forth. And by doing that, we increase the natural ability for the surface conditions, i.e. grass. To infiltrate the stormwater runoff. On top of that, we've designed the infiltration systems for the roof runoff under static conditions. DEP has a requirement that if you generate X amount of impervious surface. You have to in- infiltrate a certain amount of cubic feet of stormwater runoff. Our infiltration systems meet that. They store the required cubic feet of stormwater runoff volume. Without any consideration for the fact that once the stormwater hits the soils, it's gonna infiltrate. We take no credit for that, it's just simply storage. So in other words, the whole, the whole design of this system. Actually follows all of Mass DEP regulations. Including the ones that nobody ever looks at, which is low impact development. The dispersed BMPs, breaking up concentrated flow. Those are the big issues, those are the big ones that really, really mitigate stormwater flow.
We weren't, we weren't disputing that. We were just merely asking who's maintaining them.
The ma- the maintenance would be on the homeowner.
Okay, and how do you hold the, how do you hold?
It would be like, it would be like we saying, who's gonna mow the homeowner's lawn? The homeowner. That's, that's the, that's the extent of the maintenance on these things. Granted, you may have to weed them, granted, you may have to add some bark mowers or decorate a stone once in a while, but that's it.
Okay, would a homeowners association is supposedly taking care of that for you? So is that how it's advertised when they go to try to sell this property?
Any, any such restrictions or requirements would be part of the title of the property. And any potential buyer is gonna have notice of that. No one, no one is an unsuspecting buyer.
We'll take that under consideration, um, the HOA, you know, so if that's back on, I take it.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, could perhaps um. Does, does Mr. Nada have a a comment with respect to the use of rain gardens?
Well, I I I wanted to go back to Thad because I did ask if he had comments on TEC's. Thirty-eight um additional comments, that's something we can iron out. Like the big one, that.
We can iron them out, but we can't iron them out tonight.
Well, the big one, you know, is number twenty, I don't know if you had a chance to look at that. Twenty-two.
Is that the one, the one concerning the increase to the wetlands and the water surface?
Correct.
It it it, quite frankly. I don't even know where to begin, but it makes absolutely no sense. We did a pre and post drainage study. To a design point, the same design point. Under pre and post conditions, which is the culvert. When you analyze pre and post on the same conditions, you look to see if there's an impact to that peak flow, alright? There is none. There is no increase to that design point, that culvert, okay? On top of that, again, again, I have to stress this. Is that the review totally, totally misses. The 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 concept of the drainage listed prior to the seven, I mean, to the standards before you even go into it. And that is breaking up the flow, using LIDs, dispersing the BMPs in areas. All of that is what really makes a drainage system function far better. Than what the typical engineers do, that's why DEP asks you that. Prior to even going into your design. If you go into the stormwater rec- uh regulations, before you hit those design standards and you won't take the time to read it. You're gonna see all of that stuff outlined. That's what I do, that's what I follow because I know that that works. There's not gonna be an increase to the water elevation of the wetlands. We're infiltrating the required water stormwater runoff based on DEP standards for a B soil. But on top of that, we're doing it even more because we're just doing volume, not taking into consideration the fact. That the soils infiltrate, it's as though we're putting the water in there and saying, it doesn't go anywhere. But it goes someplace, it goes into the groundwater. So again, we can iron them out, but we're not gonna iron them, iron them out tonight because we fundamentally disagree.
No, not.
I I mean, I I can't, but but again. If I told my, as I, I'll say it to each one of you, as I say on my client, my opinion doesn't matter, I'm the designer. I'm the one who spent all the time going out there, doing all of this. But the reviewer is the one that you're gonna listen to. So I have to work with the reviewer to come up with some type of agreement on what we can do to reach something that amends, you know, the reviewer.
May I, may I speak to this?
Go ahead, Dave, and I, and I think to the response, DEP's asking, they're not mandating, if I'm right.
Um, so my, my take on all this and and that I'm not, I'm not discrediting your infiltration, I'm not discrediting your your proposed rain garden. Now that will take off um, the the impervious, you know, runoff. I think my, my point is you have one design point that's downgrading from all your different discharge places, correct?
Correct, and and let me ask you a question, why is that?
Well, let me, let me finish though. So what I'm saying is, and it's 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 pretty simple, you have the one design point that's downgrading from all of these different um discharge points. My, my only comment in twenty is for you to prove. That you're not increasing peak flows to each one of those individual discharge points. Not, not downgrading, but at those discharge points. I believe you did it in the post calculation with this revised study, but you haven't done it in the existing conditions. So I have nothing to compare it to for each individual wetlands.
What about twenty-four?
Oh, can, can we, can we finish up twenty?
Well, it's related with the, with the different storm totals of the ten, twenty-five and fifty and hundred year storm. So it's kind of the same question, only for the uh afterflow into the wetlands.
I think it does add.
So yeah, so um, comment twenty-four is in regards to the um. Is in regards to the distance and the setback in the soil absorption systems to the uh proposed uh, uh, proposed basins. And so the regulation states that you need to have fifty feet of separation between your soil absorption system. And any sort of um infiltration or or pond locations. Um, what they show is is less than that based on um, well, the revised drainage, the revised drainage, they moved it back. However, when it, when it does fill ever in in any of um storm event, even the two-year storm. The elevation um of that pond, I believe, I used the example of pond four A or rain garden four A in the hydro cad. Um, shows that the uh, the storm elevation goes up to uh one fifty-six uh one. Which is higher than granted, ten of a foot, but I was using the two-year storm as a, as an exaggerated uh example. It's still higher than that um one fifty-six and as the ponds um increases. The surface, the surface water uh footprint also increases, so it lessens the uh, the distance between. The soil absorption system and the um, and the surface water of that pond. To, or the wetted surface area, I should say, to less than that fifty feet. And then it just gets exacerbated from there uh for the ten, twenty-five, fifty, a hundred year storms.
So do you, can I, can I um respond?
Please.
Okay, so if we, if we. Look at, again, I'm gonna emphasize this again, this is directly from the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. Directly. Low impact development techniques manage rainfall at the source. Union, using uniformly, uniformly distributed decentralized microscale control. Low impact development techs, techniques use small, cost-effective landscape features. At the lot level, okay? That's, I haven't even gotten into the design standards yet, okay? It's right under environmentally sensitive site design in low impact development techniques, okay? Now, one of the reasons Mass DEP does this, first by going in, is they recognize that a lot of the towns. Don't have low impact design techniques in their regulations, they recognize that. So they asked the designer to consider it. But they also say this, proponents shall consider decentralized systems that involve the placement of a number of. Smaller treatment infiltration devices located closer to the various impervious service. In generated stormwater runoff in place of centralized systems comprised of closed pipes and direct drainers, um drains. So in essence, that's, that's, that's what we've done. It, we we've shrunk the 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 site in such a way. You know what I mean by shrunk, we've broken up the, the the drainage subcatchments in such a way. That we make use of exactly what DEP wants us to do. Which is the natural landscape surfaces. By, and and by doing that, we improve the ability of the stormwater runoff, not only to be treated for stormwater quality. But also for infiltration and minimizing the peak, peak flows. Now, if specifically, you want me to say, at this particular point. We're not increasing to the wetlands, we can break the subcatchments out further, smaller and smaller and smaller and smaller, okay? But I want you to just, you know, don't think like an engineer, that's all I'm asking you, don't think like an engineer. So if I continually break out the subcatchments in the proposed conditions into smaller and smaller areas. To all these different design points and then direct them to another one, I'm gonna get a huge benefit. You know what I mean, it it's, but again. I I, if that's what it takes to go over the finish line, if that's what it takes to go over the finish line, we'll do it.
Mr. Chair, ask one question, please.
Go ahead, Jim.
What year is this publication in which you're referencing?
Chapter one. Page four. Of the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook.
How old is that? When was the last time it was updated, that's what I'm asking you, where you getting your information from?
It's, it's the latest, it's the latest versions.
Two thousand nineteen, two thousand eighteen?
It's the, I I just went on to the Mass DEP website.
Go on the website.
Opened up their Stormwater Handbook and just read that to you.
Thank you.
Thomas Tomin, that the Mass DEP website has the latest version.
Sir, I'm only doing this for record, so if anybody ever comes back and says anything about it. We know where it's quoted from, that's all I'm trying to do, cover you, try to cover us, where you're getting your information from.
I I think, excuse me for one second, I think Brenny wanted to make a comment.
Yes, I just wanted to comment about rain gardens and my personal experience with rain gardens and no disrespect to Mass DEP. But they do require maintenance, um, there's, there's, they come, they constantly become overgrown. Especially in heavily wooded areas that we're talking about putting them in. Um, and and they do over time lose their effectiveness when you have silt buildup. So on and so forth in these rain gardens, yes, effectively from conceptual to five, ten years out. They may work great and not have a problem, maybe even fifteen or twenty years old. But eventually they do end up having some maintenance that is needed. They're not completely a hundred percent maintenance-free systems, I've I've dealt with them.
That is, that is, that's absolutely, that's absolutely correct, if you don't mow your lawn, it turns into weeds. Here's the issue, you just talked about sediment and and clogging or whatever. Two of the rain gardens do not have a TSS associated with them. One of them has a small portion of a driveway, that's one. When you look at the, when you look at the plants, the layout and the type of gardens that we're look, looking at. That I clearly gave examples of, yes, there is maintenance, there's maintenance to any landscape feature. You gotta weed it, you gotta make sure the plants grow. Um, that's why there's a specific brochure that was submitted with this. Submittal that explains to the homeowner what they are and what you have to do. But I'm, I'm, I I'm gonna disagree in the fact that, that they're an overburden on the homeowner. Because they're not. And I, if any of you want to, come on down to my house in Reading, Mass. And I can walk you around my house and I can show you all the LID measures that I have at my house. That I use that require minimal amount of maintenance and I've had them for twenty years. I'm more than happy for anyone to do that.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Wally.
Um, for the essence of time and if you wanted to get some comments in from the uh, from the general public. It looks, it looks like we got a little bit of homework to do uh, from the engineer's perspective and the applicant to uh. Find two missing a little bit, they got thirty-eight items to address and uh, and I think if you wanted to hear from somebody else before we get long. Cause we're gonna have to continue anyway, and I think the next continuing state was July twenty, if I heard that right, Rebecca?
Sorry, so it would not be um, well, the the board is more than um, so it looks like the next meeting would be July sixth. Uh, so the board is able to have a meeting there, I will not be there, so I can post it for you. Um, and you would be able to run it yourselves or the following meeting is July twentieth.
We can talk about that in a minute, that's all right, Wally. We would like to hear public comment and um, again, let's, let's kind of keep it brief, let's not dwell on what happened in the past and um. This thirty-eight TEC comments to be ironed out and let's not get hung up on these comments as well. And um, when you do talk, anybody that talks, you can unmute. If you, if there's no, nobody talking, please keep your microphone muted and state your name, please. So if there's anybody from the pub- public that'd like to speak. Now's the time. Anybody?
Yes, this is Paul Kench, one eighteen King Street. Um, I have a concern about the rain gardens and how they're gonna be maintained. I also have a concern about uh having a development association, even if it's only four homes. Uh, I just don't think uh that's gonna work, in my opinion. Uh, I'm concerned about it and I'm concerned about. Uh I'm concerned about it and I'm concerned about the wetlands.
What's the concern about the wetlands?
Rain garden runoff.
That they rain gardens are just going to fall apart, everything has entropy. And I think this has entropy as well because people do not maintain things.
And we're direct the butter, you know. We're direct the butter.
And I'm a direct the butter, so you know, I I'm going to get the the water flow.
I I don't think it's going to be a deluge of water, I think what the rain god does is I know what they do, they slow down. The flow, there's no peak flow. Um. We're concerned with the maintenance issue, there's only a couple of them. So that being said, that, do you want to take this? I guess not, so go ahead, Paul.
We we own part of the pond.
Yeah, um, well, you know, we do have a shared resource and we own part of the pond down at the bottom of the hill, so uh. And of course, that 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 does concern me and concerns my wife of of the impact.
Impact specific specify the impact to the pond or. Is that the pond right on King Street that people skate on, there's no trespasses now?
Right?
Yeah, that's, we own half of that pond.
Okay.
And also the land of butts, the one oh six property all the way and the rain garden is actually. On the our backyard on the property of one oh six.
And that's why I think. The board wants to go out there and walk it so we have a better idea what's going on and just rather speed on paper.
Right, right.
We're just concerned about the wetlands, the aqua for the pond, the quality of the pond.
We are as well.
Yeah, I know.
And how it's going to be managed going forward.
Well, that's what we're trying to iron out.
Right, thank you.
You will appreciate that, thanks. Anybody else?
Yeah, hi, this is Jeff Logan, one twenty two King Street, um I have bought the pond directly and I, you know, I second. Um Denise and Paul's comments about the pond, I've been here since uh the late eighties, early nineties. Um and I've seen that pond. You know, gravitate from high to low levels, you know, with. High rainfall, low um et cetera, et cetera, then, you know, I have a concern with anything that could impact that as well, especially being right next to it.
Okay, again, we're gonna, we're gonna walk it.
I realize that, I just wanted to make that comment, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody else?
I will say, Mr. Chairman, I did get a um a request in terms of the labeling of the um. Uh adjacent driveway or paved drive as it was listed on the plans, I did forward over a request to Kevin. To see whether or not they could update that per the agreement, um Kevin said that he would look into it, so if Kevin could just respond as to whether or not his team would be addressing that for the record, it would be greatly appreciated.
Rebecca, is this the issue that we labeled it as a paved? I'm sorry, remind me what we labeled it as, we labeled it as a paved. Uh access driveway?
It was that.
It's labeled as a.
Correct, a paved drive and that is incorrect based upon the feedback that we've received and I asked Kevin if he could reference the legal document that created the access way as part of a correct labeling so that it can be. Whatever it is between the homeowners, um but yet documented accurately on the plan so that there is a document that they can reference if they're looking for the terms of such.
You know, this is um, I I I quite frankly don't understand this, that is a descriptive label. It is without question paved, do we all agree with that? Uh and it is a driveway. Which is used as a driveway. Because of an access easement agreement between neighbors, so. What is it you would like, how would you like us to label?
Ask Kevin to put the book in the page that created the agreement for the driveway next to the description of the paved driveway.
Okay, I I've never heard a requirement like that, that is nothing more than a descriptive label, we're happy to put the recording information. Uh of the agreement that created the easement. But that has nothing to do with a descriptive label that describes it as a paved driveway, because that's what it is. But we will put the book and page on the plan.
I don't think it was a, I don't think it was a terrible request and.
I I didn't understand, I don't understand the basis of it, I mean. It's a descriptive label, it's a paved driveway, that's exactly what it is, but if you want the the. Uh you know, I'll put pursuant to easement agreement recorded at book and page, we're happy to do that.
Are you guys talking about the the horse farm access road?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that that was occurred way back with a right to pass and repass that actually had a legal challenge on it that was upheld. Um. To actually have that.
Wally, I think Robin Wright just, Robin uh just chatted, she doesn't have a mic.
Okay.
I didn't see what the the whole chat was, but.
Um. Yeah, I mean, I mean, I I understand what that was and I think and Robin was definitely involved into that.
I don't agree now, but it is an easement.
It's a easement, not a driveway, she's saying.
Yeah, and and she's, she's correct.
Not correct.
No, it's a right to pass and repass with an easement.
So the reason.
Access easement, it is physically, it is physically a paved driveway.
So the reason for the request was that we just wanted to label it with the book and page so that the homeowners and this would be a civil, whatever. You want to hash out in the future as to what it's used for, what it's not, we just want to label it to the agreement and then you. And the whatever can do what you need to do, but we're just covering ourselves in terms of the dispute that's before us, we're just wanting to add an extra label and call it a day.
And it also states it's her property, it's not a driveway, please remove the word driveway.
Highway, yeah.
Yeah, she is correct.
If it were a driveway. Of the furs, it would be allowed to bring their horses onto it.
Mm hmm.
I'm just reading what she's typing because she doesn't have a mic.
Yeah, I second that because I'm reading the same statements.
Okay. Yeah, I'm familiar with it and she is correct and um and you described the physical structure when you said driveway. And and a paved, a paved road, but it is a a right to pass and repass with it, exactly how she said that word. Uh in easement, so so should be noted accordingly, good catch. Thank you, Rob. With that, did you want to continue? Mr. Chair.
Do we have any other? Rebecca, do we have anything else on this?
That was the only other comment that had come through that was not addressed.
Okay, I think uh I think we'll do a continuation, so. Do you want to wait until Rebecca's back? Rebecca, when are you coming back?
I can, I will be back, um. I will be back by the tenth, but I, the next meeting would be the twentieth.
Yeah, that'll give everybody more time to get housekeeping stuff done too, so.
Mr. Chairman, um if we're if we're going to be pushed out till the twentieth, could we please discuss what it is? That we need to supply to the engineer before we can have a meeting. To discuss the the plan changes, um are are we? Um can we submit our written responses to this latest letter from T E C? And would it be acceptable that once we submit that, that we could then have a sit down? And and you know, we can have it at town hall and Rebecca and anyone else that wants to participate. Uh is welcome to do so, but I really would like an opportunity as the board had agreed to before. That once we submit these answers, we'd like to have a meeting with your peer reviewer. Um and go over them as a group so that, you know, we're all on the same page.
I don't have a problem with that if any of the board members, they don't have a problem with that, as long as we address the um. The concerns that T E C have and we have as well, we also like to see the conceptual of the seven hundred and fifty foot.
That I can assure you that will be done as soon as possible, Mr. Chairman, I will personally make sure that gets to you.
Can I just clarify the the intent of of what the procedure you're talking about? Show because we've we've been doing this for decades, so so um so you would submit your plan, it goes out for review. Um T E C in this case generates comments, they send them back to you. Um you correct uh the plans, the comments, you send another thing in and all of that. Takes place outside the meeting. That is free for all and and that may be just a little bit confused there, it may require a sit down, but typically doesn't. Uh but clearly the engineers are free to talk to each other all day long. Uh and we get this report submitted to the board prior to the next meeting so that we can take a look at it, see where we're going. But the process continues with the engineers outside the meeting, it doesn't necessarily mean you sit down and brainstorm a fix. It means the applicant submits what they wish to do because they're the applicant and then. The uh peer reviewer working for the citizens of Groveland. Um then reviews that and sees if it's if it meets the regulation. Uh and if there was a board decision to be made that's brought forward where, you know, we need some input from the board on this and and I'm sorry if if that uh. May have been a little confused, but that's the way the process was designed and I and I believe. I may have addressed that before, but if there was confusion, it's that process, it's not brainstorming where the two engineers get together and redesign something.
I I understand that, sir, but what you did say was that the engineers can speak back and forth freely, that's all I'm asking for. Is the ability for Thad to speak with Mr. Nader. You know, maybe they have a question to, you know, with respect to how they want something answered or or why how he's thinking, I yes, I do want, I'm just asking. For and I want Mr. Nader to hear that the board is okay with him speaking directly with Thad to try and resolve. And get to the, you know, get to a resolution of all issues, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, and that is the normal process and then and and then all the notes like, just like we see in here. Where you did put the responses and everything, I mean, this is this is what's uh. Uh very clear for people to follow and transparency because it's all written down here, nobody has any secret meetings or anything like that.
I'm not suggesting we change that at all, I'm just suggesting that there may need to be. Direct communications between the engineers so that they can get those written documents completed, that's all I'm asking.
Mr. Chair, is that okay with you, does that, did that explain that enough?
Yeah, I know, that's what, that's the way we usually do it, Wally.
Yeah.
You know what, if they have to have a little conversation in between the uh. A little dialogue for for the notes, but go ahead, but let's do it the typical way.
Right, thank you.
I just have to say, Mr. Chair, that David has been outstanding in responding to these comments and doing a great job at trying to make sure that we're responding to. The applicant as well as the butters and managing all of this, so there was no misunderstanding, it was that the applicant did not provide anything for him to provide comment on. And I just want to make sure that that is definitely stated on.
Yeah, it's pretty obvious.
I'm not suggesting the peer review engineer is not doing a great job, I'm just trying to get the lines of communication open so we can get this resolved.
Right, but keep in mind, it's it's not the peer engineer's job to design. Your application, just just to get that out there.
And we haven't asked him to do that.
Okay, that that's all, that's for everybody, that's not just you guys, that's just for everybody and and I can see from this detailed report that. That Dave is doing an outstanding job here for the town of Groveland and its citizens, so.
He's a gentleman as well, so.
Yeah, so your continuance to the twentieth?
I'm okay with that, yep.
Is is there not a possibility of July sixth?
I I think we need all players on hand and vacations are going to happen.
I I may be away July sixth.
I think I'll be away also.
Me also.
Well, that's about everybody, I'll be working.
So we got the fourth and the the fourth is what, a Sunday, it's a Monday holiday and.
Yeah.
That's all, I won't be back until Wednesday.
So so Mr. Chair, motion to continue the hearing to July twenty?
Yep, motion to continue this hearing to July twentieth.
I second it.
Okay, and we'll see you at the site visit.
Absolutely, let me do a roll call first. Bob.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Uh John, you can't vote on this because you haven't heard it, Wally.
Hi.
Brad, hi. And we will be on the, we will be at the site visit and it's June ninth at nine AM.
Okay, and question for the public and T E C. If anybody wants to go.
I'm sorry, what was that?
For T E C to be on the sidewalk.
Yes.
And and also um not many people usually show up for these, but it should be open to the public too where we got to post a. Like get together anyway.
No, Mr. Sir, we're not going to allow the public to to enter onto the property. There's too much liability associated with that, the board, your peer reviewers, your staff, that's fine, but we're not having a public free for all.
Um that's standard protocol for for posting that out there for sidewalk, usually there's only a few people that would participate.
I believe legally we have the option of allowing the public or not and we're not going to.
Well, that's an interesting challenge, um I think we're going to have to need to review that one, that's a first, I can say in twenty eight years, I've never heard an applicant refuse to uh. Allow the public on, especially butters, I mean, you can limit it to a crowd of ten, that that sounds legit, but uh.
Well, I'll I'll check with my client.
Wally, I think he's right, he he has the right to not.
I think it's private property and I think he has the right to let anybody on that he so chooses uh.
You're right, Mr. Chair.
Through the chair. Through the chair, I I'm going to say no, we don't, the public is not invited. It's the it's the planning board and town officials, that's it.
That is his wish.
All right, I'll just I'll just take a look at something with it, okay.
Well, not to doubt about, based on our observation, we are the voice of the town, so therefore when we go, we are representing the town of Groveland.
Yeah, it's it's, I I will have to say that is a first, but but uh everybody has spoken, so um. Is that it for that particular motion?
That's it.
Okay, and then uh anything else on the agenda, Mr. Chair?
We have a director update, uh so Rebecca, it's all yours.
All right, so I I just had a couple of items that I just wanted to let the board or provide the board an update, we had a town meeting on May twenty fourth. Um the town meeting had approved all of the warrant articles as submitted and approved, thank you to. Uh Mr. Danforth for being there and providing a um uh the recommendation on behalf of the planning board. Um I will say there was one error with um the conservation subdivision design, for some reason it was not placed on the warrant. Um so that one did not go through, uh we will need to reevaluate, I'm almost certain that we will have a special town meeting in the fall and at that time we can consider getting that on to. Um that specific warrant since it did meet all of the other criteria. And there was no real pushback um during our public hearing process. Um the other update is to um let you all know that you have the ability to apply for your stipends, uh the end of year is coming. Um so as long as you have the required paperwork, if you would like to um receive that stipends, just send me a note and I will um make sure that that gets processed. Uh sooner rather than later, because again, we are at the end of the year. And then. I don't believe there was any other update other than to um. Make sure that you're all up to date with your ethics training, so um I have a list and I'm going to be sending that out, we did go over that with the town clerk recently, but. Um I believe that there was a couple of expirations in September, so I will be sending that out for additional information, but other than that, Mr. Chair, that's all that I had.
All right, with that, do I have a motion? With that, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
No motion.
Second it.
All right, roll call. Jim?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Wally?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. We'll see you on the twentieth.
Glad, good night. Thanks for watching. Bye-bye.